All right. Shall we get rolling here? Call this meeting to order. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on. Roll call.
Brooks, here.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McInerney.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
Mayor Beasley.
Here. We have all that we need, so we can move on to approval of the agenda. Motion from Jones, second by McInerney to approve the agenda as before us. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item number four, we have the September 28 briefing meeting minutes and the October 2 regular council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Say it.
Motion from Housman, second from Wells to approve the minutes of those two meetings. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item five is approval of the claims for October 16. Motion from Brooks, second from Housman to approve claims. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. On the consent calendar for today is plat of Lot 1, Block 5, Stone Ridge. I will entertain a motion in a second. Motion from Jones, second from Fish to approve the consent counter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item seven is our visitors and timed items. We have Mr. Dathie and Mr. Hanson, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Dathie's here.
Do you want to start there, Mr. Hanson?
Yeah.
Go there, push the purple button, I think. We'll turn it on.
Corey Hanson? Uh, we were here last time at the zoning meeting, we were just kind of wondering with the project on Ardell's place there, that the, they've already started the project, and we went to the zoning meeting, we kind of wondered why there was even a zoning meeting if they'd already started the project. And we basically are looking at city ordinances just to make you guys aware and you uphold them, because there's currently, I don't know what the buffers are, and we're told that, you know, we should look on the website and see what the buffers are as far as noise, and nobody really could tell us at the zoning meeting what are the noise ordinances. Can, basically where we live is just west of the Marmen Energy stuff, and those guys run all night, so the machinery's running all night long, and it's particularly loud, some nights, not every single night, but what is, do you know what the noise ordinances are? Does anybody actually know them? And if there are, why are they not being upheld? We're just told, well, you guys can call the police and figure it out, but, and then just with the new project, is there going to be variances given to people with trees and greenery, and is it, where are we at with that? Because it just seems like, why did we have a zoning meeting when it was basically going to just be kind of railroaded through? Nobody was really given a chance to talk, and they've actually taken the zoning signs down now, so what was the whole point of having the zoning meeting? That was a frustrating thing to us in the neighborhood. I don't know if you guys have any questions or comments on that, but...
Why wasn't that P&amp;Z? You obviously were.
The, uh, yeah, there's still some work to be done. I, I, I don't have an answer very frankly, because I had some questions too, and I sit as the chairman of the zoning, trying to keep it going down the road to get things done, and frankly, I think I'll have to sit down and have a chat with the other people on the zoning committee, especially the ones that have the paperwork, if you will, the zone, or the ordinances and stuff, to see where we need to go back and look at them. So, that's the best I can offer you at this time.
Yeah, the hearing's been continued, so the sign came down, that's just a notice for the initial hearing. So, there's continuation until the next P&amp;Z meeting, which I believe is Thursday.
Which would be Thursday. This Thursday.
Which was announced at the, at the meeting, at the last meeting. As far as work starting, they can certainly move all the dirt they want. That's, they can move dirt if they want to, that's, the rezoning isn't contingent upon nor is moving the dirt contingent upon the rezoning. Anybody can go out and move dirt to their heart's content on their property.
Would that be allowed in the city of Brandon?
Yep.
If somebody, like the apartment deal?
If somebody, yep, if somebody wants to go dig a hole in their property before any permits are issued or zoning is approved, that's at their own risk.
Shouldn't there be another sign up to say there's another meeting about the zoning instead of just taking it down? Because then everybody just assumes it's through.
No, because it was at the meeting, it was announced that there's a continuation at the next, at the next P&amp;Z meeting, and that date and time was announced at that meeting. So, we only pu, we only published notice for the initial hearing.
And then it's just taken down after that? Is it normal?
Well, the date's wrong, so why leave the sign up if it, it's expired?
Okay, well, just to, I guess, be friendly in the neighborhood to say, hey, there's another meeting if you want to have some more input, versus everyone just assuming it's been approved, just like if you sell a house and the house sign's gone, it's, all people think it's sold. But, we're just curious at where you guys are at, as far as, you know, the, right now with Marmen, they don't have any greenery or any trees right along the side there, and it's just a dust bowl some days when it's blowing through there, and I don't know if variances were given, or variances are going to be given, and it's hard to go back, we're just saying, let's look forward as far as who gets what, where, when, and why in the city.
I'd have to go back and look at their file, see if there's a variance granted.
I thought that's what you guys were going to do, though.
We'll report that back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's where the issue was raised, was at the hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
We'll certainly take, in the meantime, I've given you landscaping standards that are in the zoning code, as well as the noise ordinance. That is the only noise ordinance that we have in the city code, which is in section 751 under disorderly conduct, or 752 disturbing the peace. We don't have any requirements for decibel levels at the property lines, we don't have any of that in our zoning code, so this is, that's it. And that's the same thing I've told everybody that's asked about a noise ordinance, is we don't set decibel levels. If it unreasonably annoys you, call the police, then come out and look at it. That's the only, that's all we've got for zoning, for sound, that's it.
Okay.
One of the notes in the, in the meeting notes says it was extended so somebody from the Brandon Development Foundation could be present for the discussion. What are they hoping to kind of glean from their involvement or their discussion?
There's, there's a question on roads, for access to a parcel.
The only comment I can make is that in the past we have, property owners have come in and told us what the noise level was, or the city has done readings of decibel levels, so you can go out and get measured readings and bring those in and say, this is what the level is, and then the determination has to be made as to whether or not it's reasonable or not.
Is that up to...
Again, get a measured decibel reading.
So, we go out and get decibel readings, or we have the city come out?
Um, you can, and the city can decide if they want to as well, but you can certainly go out and have somebody take a decibel reading.
Okay. Well, and Mr. Dathie just got here too, so I have him speak quickly, but our concern is just going forward, I mean, we know it's obviously probably going to go through because they're spending millions of dollars on the dirt work, so I doubt it's going to be, say, hey, you can't do it, which is understandable, but we're just saying, look, as far as the neighborhood, if there's going to be buildings there and the traffic study and whatever else you're doing, that at least you could uphold whatever current situations would be acceptable to the neighborhood as far as berms and grass and trees, because there were so many variances given on the last one, and Brian, we were going to look through this, but from my understanding in the neighborhood, just like one with Marmen Energy, they were supposed to have 300 trees, and there's 38 the last time I counted. So, I really don't know what's going on, and we just don't want to be the left door people just because we're just outside of the city in that area. And then the last thing is, it's just that railroad track, and we spoke about it at P&amp;Z. Some, at P&amp;Z, we're saying, hey, some of this stuff is for the council, so we don't know, just as, just as citizen, taxpayer, friend, neighbor, brother, but we just don't know, but the train tracks right in Corson are awful, and I've gone to the county, the county says the city issue, I've gone to the city, the city says it's county issue, now they've collectively said, hey, it's our issue, so we're going to work on it together. So, we're just like, well, it's been years and years and years of awfulness on those tracks.
What do you mean by, by awful?
Have you ever driven over them?
Well, are you talking about noise or crawling?
No, they're just crossing them.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's just, you, you have, I mean, you got to crawl over them, and I've talked to the railroad themselves, but they don't care, and they don't need to care, because they have so many grandfathered in, I mean, they offered me a hat, which was nice, but literally that's all I've gotten in years from them. Particularly one other little thing, and I think Mr. Dathie could show you, because he showed up planning and zoning, but those Marmen guys, I mean, they'll block both sides of that road, so you cannot get to work or get to school, they'll sit there, we called it a staging area, I suppose, at P&amp;Z, where they just, they will not let you around, I mean, they'll literally be on the, they're all going east, of course, into Corson, but they'll stay in both lanes, and they won't move. And even if there's one in one lane, the pilot car behind and in front will not let you go around them, and they'll make it very well known that they are not letting you around them.
How long of a, how long of a timeframe is that usually?
It, it...
We were talking about this the other day.
Yeah.
I'm just curious to learn more about what, what's happening there, so...
It can literally be five, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, it's just up to them as far as when they want to move, and just when you think you're going to move, they'll move and recheck, and it just gets really, really frustrating, and we're told, hey, call the police, but sometimes the police are sitting right there anyway looking for speeders, and nothing ever gets done. And one of the suggestions over a year ago was just, hey, maybe they can change it to no parking, but they're not really parking, everything's running, the motors are running, they're just rechecking everything after they've turned that first corner.
Brian, didn't we give them a timeframe somehow? Didn't we? I thought we gave them some kind of timeframe.
I know we had, had open discussion with them, because I know that the chief called up and, and visited with them. I happened to be sitting in Brian's office when that conversation took place, so I know that there's been open conversation between the city and Marmen, and wasn't it my, if I recall correctly, didn't they say that they were going to go out and, and deal with that? Chief?
I did talk with a gentleman by the name of Chad recently, he's in their shipping department, and expressed the concerns that we had. Times that I've been out there, and I've been out there when they've been staging on the roads, they'll have a, the times that I've seen it, they'd have a pilot car in the back, a little bit offset, pilot car in the front, and when it was crowded, they'd, they would flag people through. I don't know if that's been your experience, or were they blocking a hole?
If you get rude with them, they'll let you through, and if you just...
Yeah, and, and he hasn't had any shipping here recently, and they're not going to start up shipping again until, I believe, um, first part of next month, and then it's going to be picking up, and it, and it's going to be fairly busy out there. He was going to convey to the pilot drivers that they cannot totally block the road. They do have to pull over, they do check their loads, make sure that the, everything is tracking in a straight line with those long loads, and, and then they get going. They also try to avoid the high-traffic time in the morning.
Besides a lot.
You know, between like 7:30 and, I'm not, I'm not sure, they've got set times that they...
We've been talking about that, and we asked them to cut...
Yeah, so they've been, Marmen has been aware of it, they were going to talk with the pilot companies about that, they are not allowed to totally shut off the road, and that should not be happening. Times I've been out there, I haven't, I personally haven't witnessed it, had I, I would have addressed it, there's a number of different companies, though, that, that do the pilot function, so I believe that they're probably going to have to convey that to them on a regular basis.
Okay, yeah, stay on top of that for us, will you please? Thank you.
Corey, I... Yes. I think Mr. Dathie wants to speak, but the hype, that, I, that's not being followed as far as the times, I mean, he's got pictures to show you that at 9:00 AM, they're doubled on both sides, and you aren't going anywhere, so, unless you guys have more questions. My thing is just respect us as far as right next to the city, if there's some way to keep the ordinances, just if there's our ordinances, just uphold them, don't give people variances like some people get for some reasons, but that's it for me, unless you have any more, I know it's a busy night, so, I think Mr. Dathie, yeah.
I would, I would say, to give you some, somewhat of resolution on this, I will, I will contact him as well.
Okay.
What I'll ask, what I would ask you to do, if that happens again, because I know that's horribly frustrating, same thing happens to me with trains on the way to, you know, on, on the way to the hospital, so if, if that happens, no matter what time of day it is, document it for me, and in the meantime, I will contact him as well.
Yeah.
Because that, I just don't agree with that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't care what time of day it is, if, if you're a 7:00 to 8:30 commuter, I don't think we should forget about everybody, everyone else too, because that's just not, not fair, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I feel your pain, and I'll, I will, I'll look into it this week as well, I'll, I'll contact him and...
I appreciate that.
See what we can do.
Okay.
I also core in, in the region a lot.
Yeah.
And if I see those guys start transporting up there, I'll, I'll pay special attention. I don't, I've got, I've got clients up in that neighborhood, I can, I'll go up and keep an eye on them.
And I think the Marmen thing's solvable, it's just a matter of being a good corporate neighbor and just keeping on them, because the shipping guy is an example, probably a great guy, but he doesn't really need to care about who's coming from the west.
Well, that's just...
His job is to get them out there.
As the chief said, they use multiple companies, so, I mean, the pilot car.
Right.
And as far as the tracks go, I agree, they're horrible.
Yeah.
Is there a resolution? Nobody wants to write that check, so...
Yeah.
We'll check into it.
Okay.
That's, that's the best I can tell you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks.
I can speak to the tracks, I just spoke with the county today, and we are trying to set up a meeting with the individuals that are involved with getting those tracks repaired, and we've been discussing it for some time, but there's some coordination there that needs to be done with the railroad, the county, the township, so there's, there's a number of people involved with that project, so, we are moving forward with that. I did contact the county today to set up a meeting with those individuals.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I specifically think that's why Sioux Alignment actually put their business right there next to the tracks, because they'll probably lose some customers, but, anyway, Mr. Dathie's got it.
Sorry, I was just going to stop up, you asked about the Brandon Development Foundation, I'm a board member on there, and I did speak to Chuck today too, who's one of the officers on the Development Foundation, and we, after seeing this, just wanted to say, you know, we follow, we, our purpose is to purchase and sell land in the industrial park, and we follow all the city rules and ordinances, and this is kind of just an enforcement issue, so I just wanted to share that with you.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Yes.
Not really much on meetings, so, I'm Todd Dathie, I don't know if I'm supposed to say my name or how this is supposed to go, but here, and I'm not 100% sure what Corey said, but as, as a resident of Brandon and someone who lives out there, my requests are quite simple, is, you know, I'm in favor of development, I'm in favor of expansion, but the more it expands, I just want us to do it proactively together, if we can, to, to try and enforce ordinances we have, and also maybe strengthen and take another look at some of the ordinances that are in place, maybe they should be a little stronger, so that when we have these industrial parks, we create buffers, there was a big issue last week, and the, and related to something different, but the message I took away from is, is kind of a buffer issue, and I think that's where our issue is here too, when I drive down Holly, I notice the big berms between residential and the, and the street, I think that's simply what we're asking for, is, is can we be proactive now before there's new building to, to create a buffer, to, to keep it beautiful for all of us? If you look at, like, CHS as an example, I talked to Brian, and I think he, we kind of agreed, maybe it was an accident, but that big, not CHS, the big railroad, railcar repair police?
Yep.
There you go, so we're all familiar with that, but if you drive down 260th there, 260th, when you get to that area, you don't even really notice those railcars, why? Because there's three rows of trees, and if you look at the land they just bought, as soon as they buy more land, they've got more trees along all sides, creating a, a buffer, and I guess I'm saying, you know, could we hope that Marmen does that, or whoever the next resident is on the north side of the street? We could hope, but I would rather that we put something in place so that it, that it actually happens, and I just, I don't know what the exact process is, but, you know, I feel like if you don't speak up, then you're just part of the problem, so I'm here trying to do what I can as a citizen to, to be cooperative, to move, to move the issue forward. And then the second thing is, is, I don't know what the exact definition of parking is, but I would, I did pass this picture around, I'd pass it around again, and the reason here is somewhat, on behalf of my wife and my family, but when they're there digging sandwiches out of their cooler, sitting on the back of their tailgate, they're parked, they're not staging or getting ready to make sure everything's in alignment, and you'll see from this picture, they're blocking both lanes of traffic and getting stuff out of their cooler to have a snack, and when my wife went up to, to ask, like, hey, I got to get my kids to school, she was, you know, politely told to F off, and I don't think, you can't mandate that or regulate that, but it seems like a couple of enforcement, you know, if, if we were to write a ticket or two, maybe that would send a message across the whole thing. If you look at the top of that picture, and that's one good example, it's 9:00 AM, I mean, that is high-traffic time, and, and you got to do it sometime, and I think we understand that, but what I was told, I'm not sure who told me this, but I think it might be true, is that once those tubes, that's what I call them, are off the Marmen property, then, then risk is transferred, and so can they, they've got an awfully long lot over there that's gravel, it's over a half a mile long, can they figure out if those things are in alignment while they're still on their gravel lot? I, I don't know, I think maybe they could, it's the same half mile that they're using out on the concrete, and I don't know why they're doing it there versus here, but they're parked, and they're blocking traffic, and they're not, they're not good about, about letting people around, in fact, if you, even if, you know, this is just one example, it's an egregious example, but it, it gets to the point of intolerance, and someone's got to do, you know, I'm hoping that someone would do something about it, so, and it, it's, it's one thing if it's five or 10 minutes, I mean, we, you know, we all hate waiting for the train, but we do it, but when it turns into, you know, somebody eating their breakfast, then I, I think it's gone a step too far, and I would just hope that you would understand our plight and help us out.
When, when that happened with your wife, did you guys happen to call Marmen and tell them what happened?
Yeah, and you basically...
And what kind of response did you get?
You just get, huh, you get, you get transferred to a voicemail and no call back. So, that's not my issue, and then let me...
That's unacceptable.
Transfer you, and I've never received a returned phone call, ever, and we've called several times. I, I don't have documented notes on that, but I can tell you it's double digits, I mean, this isn't my favorite thing to do on a Monday night, I'm missing a soccer game, I, I just, I'm here because it's finally gone too far, and trying not to be, send this message as super frustrated, but I, I would hope that the Hanson's probably echo this, as we both got together and said, we're not part of the solution, I guess we're part of the problem, so here we are.
Yeah.
Chief?
If you find it out again, where it's totally blocked like that, give us a call, you can call 911, 367-7000, we'll send someone out there and address it, because that, that would not be acceptable.
Yeah.
What type of fine would that be?
I don't think I can see myself calling 911, but I, I almost called 911, but I'll be able to...
Understand, the non-emergent number goes to the same person the emergent number does stuff, so, yeah, it does.
And it actually makes their job easier, because all the information pops up on their screen, they don't have to key it in.
Didn't know that.
Learn something.
What tools do you have then, chief, once you go out there? I mean, obviously you can tick it or write a fine, I, I don't know that that would be pro...
We can, we can address it, it may be an educational thing for some of these...
It wouldn't be pro, do you think it'd be prohibitive, the, the fine amount, I mean, is it, what is it, 65 bucks or something?
Uh, totally blocking traffic like that, again, first time we might just...
Yeah, education.
...longer address it. Again...
Chad, Chad was going to be talking to these people about that, and, and that kind of conduct, I've never seen that, to where they've totally, I've seen them line up one, one behind the other, I haven't seen them parked side by side.
Well, in my opinion, is that it's getting worse, not better, and so, the first, you know, I read through all the ordinances after I went to the planning and zoning meeting, and I'll be first to get proactive on it, but I don't know what the side street is to the, to the south, but I, I commonly jog in them in the evening, and there'll be six, eight trucks parked there overnight, you know, with their sleepers going, and then mysteriously, those are the same six, eight trucks that are out there blocking traffic in the morning, when the shipping season's going. And I know you're saying they're not moving them right now, but when they are moving them, that's when, that's when the issue exists, and I don't, I don't know what a prohibitive number is either, but it seems like we got to do something.
Well, it sounds like they've got another shipping season, but cycle coming up here in early November, so let's certainly keep a close eye at then and really get out there and be proactive, I guess, and/or certainly reactive if, if you can call and, and they can help you out, so...
And I'll, I'll put a word to my people that are on staff, is it mainly in the morning when this is going on, or?
Well, that's what I noticed, if, you know...
Yeah. Well, I'll be honest with you, Todd, I appreciate what you're telling us, but even five, 10 minutes is not acceptable. If they're blocking that traffic and there's an emergency on the other side of that traffic, you can't move one of those in a matter of seconds to get an ambulance through or to get a fire truck through, or...
No, you cannot.
Whatever the case may be, if they're blocking traffic, whether it's for you or whether it's for any reason, that's unacceptable.
And this is why I bring you this picture, is, is, I mean, this guy's digging in his cooler, and, you know, sitting on the back of the tailgate, whatever they're doing, but I mean, that's, that's, that's a brick, that's parked, that's not...
Yeah, well, he's, he, he's behind the one that would probably pass muster the, the other one in the opposing lane, in the westbound lane would be the inappropriate...
Yeah, but there's one, and there's two in the west, I mean, there's two in the westbound lane.
Yeah.
So, they're blocking the whole thing, both of that.
Yeah, they cannot, they cannot block the, the whole thing, that's what I'm getting at, and, you know, you're going to run into times when they're going to be parked on, on hemlock, and on the one side of the street facing eastbound, they cannot take up that, that westbound lane.
How long can they park on the hemlock on the eastbound lane? I thought there was no parking there.
No, that's not, it's not marked, no parking.
Okay.
Nevertheless, if there's a problem, please call us.
Call.
Please, we don't want that problem any, anymore for you guys than you do.
I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Anything else that we can help you with?
Make sure you, Corey, make sure you attend that planning and zoning...
Yes, Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. 6:30.
Okay, we want to be as transparent as we possibly can, so...
6:30.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any other visitors, timed items that aren't on our agenda, you would have five minutes? If not, we will move on to golf course, we have a request to use the community room for the Food Pantry Annual Fundraiser in December.
I will make a motion to grant that request, they are our friends.
I'm a motion from Jones, second from Fish, to approve the request to use the community room with the fee be waived. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anything else, golf course?
Uh, fall rates are in effect, $30, 18 holes in a cart, supposed to be nice this week, so get out and play if you can.
Yeah. All right, moving on, item nine, we have the police report in front of us, and the building inspection report.
Chief, if you want to come up and let us know where we're at in the hiring process?
The process, we started on August 22 with the test that we gave, we've gone through our first and second interviews with a group of individuals, and the person that we have chosen for the initial opening that we have, young man by the name of Kyle Zegan, 23 years old, hails out of Rochester, Minnesota, graduate of Bemidji State University, bachelor science degree in criminal justice, and he's gone through the psychological, the physical, the background investigation, and our recommendation is that we do hire him, he was given a conditional job offer already, so...
Has he been through the academy?
He, he has not, but he is a post-eligible out of Minnesota, that's a 10-week court That's a 10-week course that he took. I think, was he Alexandria? I talked to so many people here recently. And so what that makes him eligible for is to study up and take the South Dakota reciprocity test.
And if he passes, he does not have to go to the academy?
If he passes, he does not have to attend.
Yes. Yes. So we're having him right away.
And he's, well, we would still have him right away.
Yeah.
You get three months to, they send the material, you get three months to study for it and then take the test.
But then we, if, if he had to go to the academy, we'd lose him for that three-month period, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we will say a prayer for Kyle to take that test. Because I will tell you that that is not an easy test to pass.
Yes, yes.
So I will make a motion to hire Kyle.
Second.
Motion from Jones, second by Wells, to approve the hiring of Kyle.
Zigan, Z-I-G-A-N.
Zigan. All right. With that being said, any question or discussion?
No, I will say, I wanna thank the chief for allowing me to sit in on the round of second interviews. I'm astounded at the quality of candidates that we're able to get. I believe the chief, we were able to develop a list of eight.
We do have, we do have a list of eight people. And they will be, I'll be making some more phone calls this week just to let them know that they're still.
The interviews that I sat in on, I will tell you, were all very quality candidates and very, very difficult to rank. So I wanna thank the chief for that. That's an environment that the city of Brandon has developed over the last 10 years. And I take a lot of pride in that, so thank you, chief.
Right. With that being said, I have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very good. Anything else, chief?
That should do it for me.
All right. Thank you. Item 10, we have a parks maintenance work report, not a walk report. And then, item 10B, we have a purchase agreement for property south of Aspen Park. Is anybody gonna discuss this?
Page 21 shows a map of the subject property. It's approximately 32 acres lying directly south of Aspen Park, Field A and the RC track. We have a signed purchase agreement with Mr. James Peterson and his wife Darlene for the purchase.
So I would make a motion that we accept that purchase agreement.
And I will second that and also say, hooray. I'm glad this is finally here. We've been working towards this for a long time, so.
I wanna thank Brian for his diligence on it because he was our negotiator, so thank you, Brian.
All right, I have a motion from Fish, second by Jones, to approve the purchase agreement with the Peterson family for the purchase of property south of Aspen Park. Discussion?
I also wanted to thank Mr. Peterson.
Yes, Mr. Peterson's in the back of the room, back there.
Yes, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. So, that being said, I have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very good.
Mr. Peterson, we'll do our best to make you proud of what we put on there, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else, Park? All right. Item 11, we have some surplus property. And we have some bids.
We do. We opened bids today for the trencher. And we received one bid from Eddie Hoffman, $1,001.65 for the trencher. And then we received one bid on the old snow blower from Dean Watzel from Winter, South Dakota, in the amount of $4,215.
Of course we do.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept them.
Motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks, to accept those two bids for our surplus equipment. Questions or discussion? They will come pick these up.
Yep.
Don't have to ship them. That's always good. Any other questions or discussion? That said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have liquor license fee discussion, I am assuming.
All right. I brought this up again. This seems to be a burn my bonnet because several years ago, we went from a very low number to a very high number. So now we're at $125,000 for our liquor licenses in town. And now we have three of them sitting on the books. And now with our new Mexican restaurant in town, they chose not to purchase a liquor license because of the fee. And to me, the reason that the original council decided to up it is because they thought once we hit 10,000, all these big restaurants are coming to town and they would want these, you know, this liquor license. However, that has not happened. And now we sit with three of them. And to me, we've done some research on some other cities. None of them have liquor licenses on hand. They don't even know, I mean, because their businesses sell within themselves. So they, none of them have liquor licenses. So to me, I want to lower our liquor license fee. It's, to me, $125,000 is astronomical for a fee. If we want quality restaurants to come to our town, we need to be more affordable so they can be able to get this. So that's my reason for bringing it up, and I'll be open to discussion.
So Joe, I said this the other night, interestingly enough, you weren't here the other night. Interestingly enough, this was one of my first subjects I wanted to tackle when I joined city council a few months ago. And we kinda got caught up with the whirlwind that's going right now. But I couldn't agree more. I think $125,000 is just astronomical. It's, it's, it's not realistic for a place like El Tapatio, who I think, personally, I believe would be a model steward for a liquor license. I think that's the right kind of sales that we want and to contribute to our tax base. So I couldn't agree more and I'm in your, I'm in your corner on this one.
Thank you.
Agree or disagree? Historically, I wanna make the facts clear where that $125,000 fee came from or where that dollar amount came from. That dollar amount came from owners such as Mark Fonder, sitting in the back, and two other owners within the city that came up and testified in front of the council as to what that liquor license was on their purchase agreement. That's what they paid for their liquor license. You know, the council struggled. We struggled with this for a long time. You know, and we finally came to the resolution. I agree, it's a lot of money. But the reason that we came to that conclusion was because that's at the time what we could figure as the actual value. And that was, like I said, that was testified in front of the council by Mark. And I would welcome Mark to come up and visit with us again about that. You know, whether we lower the amount or not, in all honesty, it doesn't make a difference to me, what we do. But we can't willy-nilly come up with a number as to what we think the value of this license is. I mean, we have to do our due diligence to the citizens of Brandon because this is an asset. Now, I agree with what Joe's saying. This restaurant didn't get one. They wanted one, they didn't get one because it was too high. Okay, you know, I've got a very open mind. I'm willing to debate anything. But in all honesty, if this council is gonna change that, I am not against change. But then we need to come up with a factual number that relates to what the value of that license is. Because that's what the council did at the time. And we did that by the testimony of the people out in the market that own those licenses and paid for those licenses. Mark, would you like to?
I know one gentleman who no longer has, who no longer has a restaurant, and he testified that he paid that amount. I know how to read HUD settlement statements. And I testified right there and saying, on your HUD settlement statement for the purchase of your property, nowhere does it say that you paid $125,000. It wasn't these two gentlemen in the back, but the person that did it at the time, he continued to say he paid $125,000. I said, nowhere is it listed on this HUD settlement statement that you paid that amount of money. Hence, now we have that one back.
And as I said, I'm not here to debate that. I'm just here to tell you, that's where we came up with that number. That's, I sat on the council at that time. And to be honest with you, that testimony is what swayed me. This is an asset to the city. I mean, there's no question about that. Yes, we're sitting on three liquor licenses that I would like to see in place out in the public making retail sales tax dollars. I don't disagree with that. So I certainly am open for debate and open to look at it again. The only thing that I'm gonna say is, we did our due diligence at the time when we did that. And we went through that for an awful long time before that number was come up with. So if we're willing to look at it again, great. Let's go back to the drawing board and start all over again. But I'm not gonna ever vote for a number that doesn't have some type of factual basis on it as far as an asset to the city.
The last, I can just tell you where I'm at. The last time we had discussed this, you know, we talked about that. We didn't have any official license sales, so we had established the price based on some private market transactions. And I'm very sensitive to that fact that if those businesses, which are staples of Brandon, paid that, it essentially is a bit unfair to then resell new ones at a lower price because it creates a little bit of unfair competition and we wanna show. Loyalty's not the right word, but at least, you know, kinda let them drive that. But at the same time, I do believe in an efficient market and the market should be setting the price out there. And I'd argue at that time that we just didn't have enough information to say that the price is too hard, too high, and the market is responding by not getting them. So I've kinda been sitting back and watching and seeing how it's evolved over the last year to two years. And we've seen that nobody really has approached us asking for a liquor license. And the most recent restaurant has indicated it's because the price is too high. So we've essentially got these two things that are weighing against each other, right? The efficient market saying is the price might be a little too high versus doing what's right by the businesses that originally paid that price. So the third thing that really I think should weigh in here is what's in the best interest of the citizens. You know, in the best interest of the citizens is for us to potentially sell one of those licenses, not because of it's gonna generate $125,000 to the city. I don't view that as much a factor at all. But the future tax revenue growth as a result of that is important. And the additional options for the citizens within the city is important. So Blaine talks and raises a good point. How do we ever arrive at a number? I don't know how we'd ever analytically or data-driven get to a number. When I sit back and I think about what the correct number should be, you know, my concerns are if we priced the number too low, the types of businesses that we attract are not the ones that are gonna produce the tax revenue that we're hoping for or the options that we're hoping for. If we put a number on there of 10,000, 20,000, we'll get a couple of businesses that come in that just wanna throw up a couple video lotteries and have a liquor license at the same time. That's not what we're looking to attract. On the flip side, if we price it too high and we're pricing ourselves out of the market, then we're just not getting those businesses in. So it is important, and that's why I'll potentially probably most likely vote and be in favor of lowering it. But in a stepwise fashion, I'm not talking go from 125 down to 20. You know, you kinda gotta gradually lower it each year and kinda see where that tipping point is. Unfortunately, when you're dealing with the three of them, it's such limited data and information there that you'll never arrive at an optimal number. But I think that's kinda the best approach at this point.
Well, and I'm not, and I'm not even saying 20,000. I just wanna have the discussion of what we, you know, lowering it and what we should lower it to. Because I still, you know, I still, the $125,000. And as you said, $125,000 is just a one-time fee. However, we want the tax revenue. But if the restaurants can't afford to purchase $125,000, then we're not gonna get, you know, that tax revenue off of that. So I'm all for, that's why I approached it, because I want the communication of being able to lower it. And I don't know what the number is. I'm here to tell you, I don't know what the number is. I just wanna lower it.
My question would be this as far as process. And thank you, John, because I completely agree with what you're saying. Each one of the members on this council also sits on the Board of Equalization. We listen to the Board of Equalization. We listen to the people that bring their inquiries into us every year. And we've developed a very good process as far as the Board of Equalization. And the Board of Equalization bases their decisions on what is the real value of that property? And what do we go by, by the real value of that property? It's the appraised value. It's not necessarily the value that's brought in by the county or the state. It's what the real value of that property is. Whether you purchased it, you've got an appraised value, you've got a purchased value. If you purchased it, that's the value of the property. That's when we related back to making this decision. That's how we based our decision. In my opinion, it's really no different than the Board of Equalization. What is the actual value of the license? And that's our job to determine that. When we came up with $125,000, we came up with $125,000 and it was voted on because we had determined that was the real value of the license. And we use the same theory that we use when we sit on the Board of Equalization.
It's a, how long ago were those transactions? Was it five, 10 years ago already now?
2012 is when the ordinance was adopted, setting the license fee at $125,000. So I think all of those transactions took place within the preceding 12 to 18 months, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. 'Cause when I think about it, you're right, you can use an assessed value like that, which is a true, we understand it. But that was at a time that was six, seven years ago when there was limited market and availability, which drives the price up. Now the market, we have the availability. It's been five years. It's shown that nobody has, the price can only go down at that point, right? Because the demand isn't there, right?
And I don't disagree with that. But I guess the point that I'm getting at is I'm more than willing to open the conversation and bring this back to the table. But how do we come up with that number? You know, that's how we came up with the number originally. I'm not saying that the number shouldn't be changed. You know, if there's a market out there and we're not moving that. I'm just saying, and I'm looking at it from bar owners within the city. If we lower that amount, we're taking an asset out of their pocket. We need to remember that because that is what the appraised value of their license is. And also keep in mind that if they choose and they change ownership, they own that license and they can sell that license. So whatever we reappraise the value of this license at is going to, in turn, affect their assets of their business.
Yes, Mr. Brooks.
I'll just throw this out there, nobody brought it up. And that's what about doing a sealed bid process, just like you would on a contract bid. Goes to the highest bidder. They know what's out there. And that business itself can be given some thought that way.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, you just, the problem with the, it's a fair idea, but the problem is you have to have multiple bidders. After one asset, right here, we have no bidders after three assets, so it's just tough.
I know when we went through this very time-consuming thing, we also looked at our very successful neighbor to the west of us and how they do theirs. And unfortunately, they have the demand for new businesses coming in. We're kinda on the outskirts looking in. And I know that during that discussion, their process was discussed quite frequently. And we had a different people that were sitting up there. Some of us were still here. Some of us were here, some, we have some new people here now. But I know that they had that dream that we were going to get these name brands coming in. And unfortunately, we are too darned close to them. If we were 50 miles away, we'd probably be in a better position, very much so. You know, a perfect example is Brookings, South Dakota. There's nobody by them. They're 50 miles away from. They're 50 miles away from Sioux Falls. So, all these restaurants are coming, plus they also have a college there, which helps them immensely, but... So, we're in a unique situation and we have to come up with a unique solution to our problem.
Well, thank you, Joe. I truly do appreciate you bringing this forward, but bring the ideas to the table because I just don't know what they are.
Hello, everyone?
Push the purple button.
My name is Maria Gitchron. I'm the owner of El Tapatio and my husband's here with me. I'd like to thank the community for the support that we have received in our business. I'm kinda nervous.
That's alright.
We thank you for coming to Brandon.
So, I've been listening to the discussion and you probably know this, but we own a restaurant also in Del Rapids and they implement a lease where they lease the license to the business and we pay an amount, I don't know if you wanna know the dollars, but roughly $1,900 and we pay them 10% tax on the liquor that we buy. So, that's how they run the licenses. They still own the license, but we lease the use of the license to the business.
Okay. Are you also involved in the one in Yankton, South Dakota?
Yeah, we have the one in Yankton. That one also has mountain beverage only, like the one here.
Oh, okay. You don't have hard liquor license then?
No. We've been talking to the city throughout the years about it and they're set at 72. So...
72,000.
Mm-hmm. That's the amount. Last time I checked, the lease that was back, I don't know, three years ago. So, I'm just, you know, trying to, here to listen to the discussion and see where this ends, cause obviously it's affecting now our business that we brought in. It's quite the investment that we put in. It's...
Are you getting customer feedback?
Yeah, we have had quite a bit of customers asked if we have the full liquor and requesting over their variants of beverages, like we have in Del Rapids for whiskeys and other sorts of menu that we offer in that location, because, I mean, we're here to offer obviously food, but to complement that, people do request a drink and I mean, sometimes they would get turned away because they don't have...
Sure. Want a good margarita?
Yeah. So, I, that was, that came to my mind to, I mean, suggest about that option. I don't know if it's to any...
We will, we will take the time to research that, because that's certainly a new aspect that I've not heard of.
Some wrinkles that we have not ever heard of, or I have not ever heard of.
Yeah. I guess I can provide the more information to Christina about it for what, how they run it. We, we run a lease and it's an annual lease that we signed. It's very strict. I mean, it's not, some, nothing easy. I think they have it draft. I don't know if they implemented to other places that they have in the town, but that's how we, we got it and it's renewed every year. So, we, and we pay them the, the tax on, on the liquor portion.
Do you have other restaurants that you actually own? Cause I heard you guys have a half a dozen different...
No, you know, there, we've been working on that situation, just with our lawyer itself. There were some people that opened in Winter, South Dakota and...
What was the other one?
Madison. We're not related to, to them. We're working on them removing the name because obviously we're incorporated and they have no legal right to put our name out there, so that's another hole.
So, maybe one, one thought here, you know, I think we're all in agreeance that, you know, it can't be too low, can't be too high. I, I think everybody's probably will agree on that. Maybe one thing I, I would maybe suggest that maybe you get some numbers to Joe on what your projected sales would be if you did have a, just to help us get an idea of what to set that number at.
I can easily get that from Del Rapids because it's very similar. I mean, I don't compare the, probably the, the size of the town, it's probably smaller.
Well, and you don't, you don't even have to worry about that. We can, we can look, we can compare and contrast the numbers. If you just, if you get some of that information, you know, I know it'll help me make a decision on where to set that number and I'm sure everyone else as well, so... That might be a good, something proactive you could do, cause I'm all for you and by the way, I love your food.
Was that?
I said, "By the way, I love your food."
Oh, thank you.
Do you have, is your restaurant in Sioux Falls, does that have a liquor license?
No, it has mountain beverage too, cause Sioux Falls obviously is at 150.
250.
250 now? Okay, it was 150 maybe four, maybe five years ago. I'm sure, but that's a tougher market to discuss. I think it's a lot harder city and bigger.
Yeah, they're a lot, like you said, they're much bigger than us.
Well, thank you for coming and we will, we will explore the option of that lease and we will have very many discussions about this.
Yeah, and I will send the information that I can get for that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's awful nice to drive by your restaurant and notice that there's not one parking space available. So, thank you for coming to Brandon.
Thank you. Yes, Brian?
Del Rapids has a municipal liquor store.
That's...
So, it's an operating agreement, so you have to buy all, it's like Brookings, you have to buy all of your beer through the municipal liquor store.
Oh, okay. That's how they can lease it out.
Since we don't have a municipal liquor store, that option's off the table.
Sorry.
Yep, so...
Yes.
Yeah, the only thing in statutes is, is you must charge at least a dollar per cap based upon the population of the last census, which would be 87, 85. Other than that, it's, it's open-ended. I will see if I can find a commercial appraiser that has some experience with liquor licenses or liquor establishments and see if they can kinda give us a...
Thank you.
...market range.
Yes. Yes, cause that, that was the, the fuel of the, our previous discussion was a property owner wanted to expand her business and add like a restaurant and wanted the liquor license at 8700 dollars. Yes, and we, we went forward with that. But thank you again for coming, very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
So...
So, we're open for discussion then?
Yes.
So, you get that information and then, okay, alright.
Anything else, administration, other than we have planning and zoning? Alright. We have our maintenance work report and then we have some discussion and some numbers on Meadowbrook Trail, I believe.
Well, we gave you a, a copy of the full build-out that was included in the traffic study that was completed in 2009 by SEH, cause there were some questions at the last meeting about stoplight. There was no stoplight ever contemplated at Sandstone. It was always turn lanes, a right turn lane for eastbound and a left turn lane for westbound. So, I think you've got, I think you've all got a copy of that picture. So, that urbanized section would extend basically from the apartment building west to the curve west of, of Arbor Ridge Road, showing this Taylor Drive on that one. So, that's what was contemplated in the, in the traffic study.
So, with that being said, how do we, what's our next step in trying to help these people get in and out?
You know, it might be appropriate to get ahold of SEH and maybe update that study. Granted, they, they would contemplate full build-out for the property that's served by Sandstone and Heritage, but we could certainly get ahold of them and see if they could update that traffic study for us, see if, if things have changed at all.
That'd be good, cause there's a lot more development there than what's in here.
What's showing, but when they, when they do a traffic study, they look at all of the adjacent land uses and what the full build-out would be in 20 or 30 years.
I guess I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to poison that question. Of course, there's going to be a dollar amount attached to that, so I'd certainly like to know what, what that is. But we need to continue, you know, I, I guess I'm asking the council, you know, I'm on bent knee to tell you, we've talked about this so many times. We need to continue moving forward with this and not let it get stagnant.
This blue hash line, this future street extension, is that a non-issue now? Is there any way we can have that built?
Isn't there all houses up there?
They're all...
There's all houses up there.
We, we have to find a way to get these people in and out of there, especially at the busy times. Four o'clock in the afternoon, it's not a problem. Seven to eight o'clock in the morning, it is a problem. Five o'clock at night to six o'clock at night, it is a problem.
Well, I guess I'm gonna go back to the same discussion that we had earlier with those towers blocking traffic. That intersection gets blocked. We've got an entire housing project out there that we're unable to get emergency services to. There's one way in, there's one way out. I just don't think that's a viable option.
I'll push it again. There you go.
Norman Drake, part of F. Fish. We own the land kinda to the, oh, it'd be the northwest corner, the signalized intersection there. And one of the questions I have is, I thought, we've owned that land for quite some time, but I thought I'd saw a PUD come across that actually connected both of these tracks previously. Is that correct?
I think you're talking about the, the plan that the developer had and issued to...
And, and was approved.
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, is that correct?
It is.
And, and so now, there's an issue with, because somebody allowed that street not to go through or what?
From what I understand, Norman...
I'm just trying to find out what happened.
Sure, and from what I understand, and I'll let Paul speak to this a little bit more, the developer changed the plans and at the time was able to change the plans without approval from the city. That's the best answer I've gotten. That's the best answer I've gotten because you're right. I mean, I've been part of this community for 54 years. I seen the original plans for this and there was a connecting street and all of a sudden it turned into a cul-de-sac and their house is built.
I mean, I know we, I also represent a small development company in Sioux Falls and I mean, I know that, you know, when we submit these things, I mean, we're kinda held to them and if we can't figure it out, we're the one, we're the ones that the city and the county come back to, to make it, make us figure it out and make it equitable for And now I see it going across to piece of private property.
I guess I can't speak to the decisions that were made before I was here and how or when that decision was made. There is a plan that showed that being future right-of-way or right-of-way between, is that Creekside?
Creekside.
Creekside Drive. I can tell you what our process is now, once a preliminary plan is submitted and that's approved, unless it's something that's major, it doesn't go back to planning and zoning, but once planning and zoning approves that, we move forward with the plans and that goes through council for approval and then development engineering plans are submitted and they move forward with a plat. And so, that, that can't be done without approved preliminary plans. So, if that preliminary plan were approved, went through P and Z, I, I can't speak to that if that was what was approved at the time.
Again, I'm not, I just, I'm just reciting, you know, what I think, what I think occurred and I mean, it's obvious where the street alignment was before, Paul. I mean, you can see it where it really should've gone through. And they elected to sell the additional lots and make additional revenue and I, I just...
Agreed, Norman. I absolutely, I absolutely agree with you.
And I just, I feel really bad when somebody, you know, ends up having to bear a financial burden because of somebody else's mistakes. I just...
We've gone back to those parties and asked those parties to make it right and, and the door's been closed in our face. So, I mean, we have, we have no choice, but you know, if we can't get this figured out, you know, we, we will go as far as moving forward with condemnation of land.
Yeah, well, and you know, and obviously that's certainly within, certainly, no, I mean, it's certainly within the authority and I don't, I mean, I don't think it's in anyone's best interest to do that.
I agree.
There should be some equitable situation that could be worked out amongst the parties involved. So...
So, just for my information, if that street had been put in, who would have buried the cost of that development? The developer?
The developer who originally puts the plan in, that paves the streets and...
Then you put the cost back on.
Yeah, I mean, and you, and one of the things that really concerns me is you look at the distance on that street compared to now the distance in the street. If you just use a round number of $325 a foot to put in the street, I mean, that's considerable encumbrance on somebody outside of the original developer.
Yes.
All I wanna do is point it out.
Thanks, Norman.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it, Norman.
I appreciate you coming, Norman. Thank you.
Anybody else? Some...
Okay, so what are we gonna do? What's our next step?
Let me get ahold of SEH and see what a cost estimate would be for a update. Shouldn't be outrageous.
Well, and I, in all honesty, you know, at the council being at the point it is, you know, I, I say we go back to the developer and say, once again, you know, are you willing to work with us to make this right without us having to go forward with condemnation? Cause we don't wanna, I don't wanna do that.
I don't either, but...
But this is a part of our city and these are our citizens out here.
Yeah, these people have not a safe right-of-way to get in and out of and that's a big responsibility for us, is their safety. Their safety is, should be formed out in front of us, so... Okay, so Brian, can you get ahold of them? Thank you very much. Anybody else want to talk about this? Alright. Anything else, street?
No. Uh, no.
I'm alright.
I did not.
Item 13, we have resolution 1817, Big Sioux Lift Station Bonds.
This will authorize the sale of our, our bonds through the state for $2,598,000 for the Big Sioux Lift Station. Remember, that was a, we received a loan from the state for that.
Motion from Wells, second by Jones to approve resolution 1817, Big Sioux Lift Station Bonds. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 13B, we have the water system discussion. We had a meeting last Tuesday. We talked with the public. We've said that we would take all of their information and continue with our discussion with those, contacting hydrologists, geologists, moratorium on development, purchasing water from other suppliers, compare water consumption and quality, passing on capital costs for improvements to the water system, to new development, plan more meetings and discuss well number eight.
So, one of my thoughts was that we put together what I would call a working group or a task force to pull some of our citizens in that are interested in this issue. I think there's a lot of energy in the room around it and we might as well get all of the information out. I don't know exactly how to structure that, but I have talked to Don and he would be happy to run that for us. And I, I think that might be one way to work down this avenue.
Well, I think we certainly found out from that meeting that there's a plethora of knowledge out there that... of knowledge out there uh that we have not tapped into. Um, and I think bringing that knowledge to the table um is a must. I mean, it is an absolute must. Educated decisions is what, is what we are supposed to do. And if we're missing something, then it's our task to see what we're missing. Um, right, wrong, or otherwise, um, you know, it it's time to open our minds um and uh look at other avenues. Um, you know, as far as uh tabling uh well number eight, uh, I think that's discussion for the council. Um, you know, just given the fact that we are in a timeline here and and we know where we're at, um, I think it's prudent to have that discussion. But I am fully in favor of putting that committee together. Uh, there was a, there was a lot of intellect in that room uh and a lot of resources that we can tap into that we've not heard of before. So.
Exactly. And my opinion, and my opinion doesn't really count unless there's a three-three vote and then I get to voice my favor.
There's a fair.
I, I would also like us to open up some discussion with, with these other people that may or may not have water for us to look at. Um, the county, Minnehaw County Water, Row Water, as I call it, um, the city of Sioux Falls, if if they're in, interested in it. Um, I know that uh spring is going to come after winter, which is coming around the corner, and then summer's going to come. And then we will be also into our peak water usage. So the more conversations we can have moving forward with possibly getting a supply, whether it's temporary or not, would probably be in our best interest, along with pursuing our plan of wells and whatnot. And this committee also, I mean, yes, I'm a hundred percent.
I agree. Summer is coming. But I think the thing that we need to look at is we have plenty of water.
We do.
We have plenty of water if the citizens would follow the ordinance in place.
Yes, I, I'm a hundred percent agreeing with you.
And frankly, they did. Um, and even with a shot across the bow, they still didn't, which uh we had to put the ban in place uh to protect our fire systems. We did. But moving forward, um, is this a task that we have to take on? Absolutely. Um, if you look back at the council, we've taken this task on for the last twenty-five years. There has not been in the last twenty-five years any time where we have not been talking about water and sewer. Um, it certainly has become a more pretentious, pretentious issue uh in the last five years, uh even eight years. Um, but I think everybody needs to understand that it's emergent when we don't follow the ordinances in place. When we follow the ordinances in place, we went from two-plus million gallons of usage down to between nine hundred thousand and one million gallons of usage, which gives us plenty of room. That doesn't tell us that we don't have a problem, that we don't need to continue working towards. But as citizens, we need to understand that we are, we are stewards to Mother Earth and this is a resource. It's important to everybody, plain and simple. And if, if you choose to just abandon the laws that have been put in place, then shame on you. Um, you know, what it's going to do is it's going to, it's going to make us spend an awful lot of money very, very quickly instead of taking the time that we need to take to look at this this issue as a whole. So I want to make it known that we have plenty of water. So the, the concern out there that Brandon's out of water is not true. That's absolutely not true. If you look at the usage throughout the year, we peaked when it got dry. Um, the letters went out, the restrictions went out, they weren't followed. Uh, we had set a time limit on how long we would let it go at peak usage before we had to put that ban into effect. We had no choice. As soon as we put that ban in effect, look at what happened to our usage. It went from two-plus million gallons down to nine hundred thousand. I think that says an awful lot. The ordinances that we put in place are there for a reason. People need to follow.
And I think that we can um think about some other concepts such as if folks decide that they do want to do a lot of watering, we just charge by the volume. You know, right now, it's just a flat rate. And we could do something like that. So I think, I think this task force could come up with some other options available for us that as a council, it's just really hard for us right up here to sit and do that. And um, so I think if we have a working group, that they can come up with some things. And I know Don has some ideas too.
How many people are we thinking to be on the work group?
I think whoever wants to be on it.
We, I will tell you though, only because I've done this for the better part of my life, um, you have to limit the number that you put on there and bring in your resources well and from an educated standpoint. Because if we just build a work group around the people that want to be on there, there's going to be so many opinions that there's not going to be a chance to come to a conclusion.
I would.
You know, and that conclusion is, is, would be considered advisory, you know, back to the council. But uh, that's just my two cents worth. I mean.
Okay. Mr. Wells, do you have any idea or?
Yeah, so I, you know, from the beginning, I've put a lot of work into this and a lot of time already. And and I'll hold all my opinions and comments until we get into one of these meetings because I do have a lot of, a lot of ideas. But at the same time, I, I feel like I'm a very fair person and I'm willing to listen to anybody and I'm willing to listen to any idea. And I am not, I can assure you, I am not sold on any particular pathway right now. That I can promise you. And I, and I think that's important here because I, I don't want to go into this agenda just trying to play defense on, you know, where we think we need to be versus where someone else believes we need to be. Um, I a hundred percent agree uh that we need to sit down together, you know, a, a select people, you know, from, from each, well, let's just, let's just say several different mentalities in the room, whether it's councilmen, city employees, engineers, citizens. Um, I think everybody will have something valuable to contribute and I absolutely think it's a great idea and I, I have no problem uh moving forward with it. So.
Anybody else want to talk about this? So we got a lot of faces in the crowd. I, I agree. I think we, we need to, to involve our citizens. As they proved last Tuesday, they, they were very interest, interested in, in what's going on. And some have expertise in this field more than most of us sitting up here. Extremely more than me. So.
Should they contact?
I would think that they need to contact Mr. Wells. If, if you don't mind, or me, I, I, you can contact me.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's a good idea. If, if you want to contact myself or the mayor, um, I think what I need, what we need to do is take a look at who's interested in being a part of this and then kind of figure out where to draw the limit. If we do draw, draw a line, where to draw that line. Um, because the people that I think are, are going to want to be involved, I, I think there's also going to be several other fields of interest, you know, to us.
Sure.
Just based on from what I know at the, at the current moment. That's why I say after receiving requests and information from people, I think we'll be able to make a good decision on how to construct it. But, you know, like I say, hydrologists, engineers, I mean, I, I believe and I've always said, I've always said this, I believe in education and, and I believe in educating ourself and involving our citizens in the process because they are uh just as capable as we are in the, in this arena. And um, I think education's the key. So let's sit down and, and communicate what we're thinking and, and come up with an educated decision on how to move forward.
I agree. I agree. One hundred percent. Um, yes, and like I said, I, I, I think it is also our responsibility to open up conversations. Whether it starts with, let's get together with, for a cup of coffee with these people in Minnehaw County Rural Water Systems or the city of Sioux Falls, are you, would you be interested in, in having an in-depth discussion with us on getting some of your water, those type of things? And then build on that. What's it going to cost us? What's going to, all that? So that we can get this information to the, that group also. And we, as a group, can make a logical and a sound decision.
Educated decision, absolutely. And as you, I just want to make note, uh, as you look at the agenda, you can see that any voter or anything on well eight has been pulled from the agenda. So there certainly will be further discussion before there's anything done with it.
We say maybe if we can get the word out there, maybe by next council meeting, we can come up with a, a list of who's to be involved. I mean, is that fair? Is that enough time?
Yeah.
And I want to hear from you. I've always said, you know, this position is, you know, I, I want to be a voice of the community. I don't want to make these decisions based on just what I think. So I, I want to hear from, from the community as well. If, is that enough time? If you think so, then.
Fourteen days.
Then that's what we'll do.
It's fourteen days because October is a unique month that has five Mondays in it. So we don't have a meeting till the sixth of November. So that's.
I think certainly fourteen days uh with the help of social media, of course, because that certainly spreads the word. I think fourteen days, if there's anybody out there that is interested in being that, I think that's more than enough time to be able to get that using your business or using your city email and the phone number that you have posted on the city web page, correct?
Yes. And if I do not get back with you, if it goes to spam or gets lost in cyberspace, um, if I don't get back with you, you contact me because I will get back to you. If you email me, I've never not responded. I may have been late in some instances. But um, if I don't get back with you, let me say that publicly, make sure you get a hold of me because I, I will respond.
So Micah, could we get it in the paper, some sort of a, something? Okay. And um, we can put on the, our Facebook page?
Yep. Very good. Anything else? Anything else? Any other business before the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Jones, second from Housman, for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Happy anniversary.